Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Monday, November the 2nd, 2020. We're here in our, now more usual than not, Monday and Thursday afternoon meetings since the beginning of the COVID era. Typically, we start out by requesting any updates about COVID and any COVID information in general. Typically, also like to start with our health agent to see if anything new and exciting is happening.
Fortunately, nothing bad, but we didn't have one on our case. So it's last time in that very quiet this weekend, but we still have power. Statewide, it continues to grow. So we get the emphasis on social distancing, masks and washing hands, proper protocols, especially with the holidays coming up. And full Thanksgiving dioceses have come out on the mask website to try to keep families and friends safer with the holiday season coming up.
Holidays are going to be extremely difficult. They're hard to conduct with masks on?
Very hard. And now, I believe it was mentioned who's added to the list. If people do travel out of state, there's the quarantine coming back in.
That was sort of a tit for tat, wasn't it? Connecticut, didn't Connecticut put mask on the list first and then mask put Connecticut on the list immediately afterwards?
Exactly.
It's kind of an interesting timing thing with that. All right, thank you, Bob. Anything else? Jason is not here today. I don't think he had anything new and exciting. Did he comment anything to you?
No. There've been a few questions that have come up as a result because we did have an employee test positive, I think it was about a week and a half ago. And so the staff here has asked a couple of questions and also I brought in Steve Hayward and Keith Swanson.
Yes, sir. Do we need masks on?
Yeah, we're at 11, I believe. Because that situation affected their departments and I wanted to have an open conversation with Bob here to make sure that we're following the correct protocols for dealing with incidents at work. And then if we don't have a specific protocol to get one created, we did one back in June that was more related to individuals and families rather than the workplace environment. But I did get asked about COVID testing results in terms of if an employee obtains a COVID test due to having possibly symptoms of COVID. As opposed to, for instance, traveling from state to state, gain the necessary state test to go to another state. But due to having possible symptoms of COVID, due to being exposed to a possible case at work or connection with taking federal COVID leave and/or sick leave, that we need, as in the town, needs to provide that result or the employee needs to provide that result to the town for the employee's confidential personnel file. It's not something that's shared with the general public, it's not something that's shared around town hall or other buildings. It's simply a confirmation whether they tested positive or negative. Now, as I mentioned, there are going to be other circumstances when a COVID test may take place. For instance, you want to go to another state or you're coming back from another state, which is, if it's the latter, then the situation there is we already have that in place. There was a travel policy, you needed to test negative, and that result would be something you'd have to provide again to the town to go in the personnel file. So that if you're going to be coming back to work within a certain number of days of having traveled to one of the quarantine states, that we have confirmation either A, you're going to take the time off, or B, if you're not taking the time off because of the negative test, then we have a record of that negative test in the file. I don't know if the board, I can, I want the board to discuss this because I want to make sure that we get this information out to the department heads. If we're doing it this way, if we're not doing this way, how we're handling tests of COVID for employees? Well, we haven't, this situation hasn't happened that often, that's why we're now having the discussion this number of months in. If we're dealing, forgetting about COVID in general, for instance, we don't require our doctors know unless someone's been out for a large number of days and we think we have, in general, we've never assumed, for instance, that someone's contagious, whether it's the flu or anything else. Person stays home until they get better, they get better, they come in and we don't require a test. We require physical, for instance, on physical abilities, when someone has a broken leg and we want to make sure that they're not putting themselves or their fellow employees in danger. So we might say, you need to have either your physician or the town's physician evaluate you to come back from a broken leg. It doesn't matter whether it's a broken leg from work or a broken leg from skiing, we want to make sure you're going to be able to function. But we haven't had, I don't know if it's one or two cases for town employees. I'm not influencing the school, I have no information about the school, we don't keep personnel files for the school. But what we're saying, what we're saying is that you need, if you're, if you're getting tested, now, you know, that in fact you do, you have to provide those test results to the town. So I don't know what the board wants to do. If it's not, if we're not going to require the test results, how are we going to handle COVID testing in a sense of knowing that if someone says, I tested negative but doesn't provide the results and says, I'm coming back?
I think you have to require the results.
Bob, do you have any advice?
Well, so are we talking for testing or for coming back to work?
Well, both, I think it's combined. I mean, there's the, here's the protocol for coming back to work and I think we need to have a conversation, especially with the department heads here, about that type of situation as to when, what people should be doing or not doing in terms of returning to work after being possibly exposed to COVID or having a positive test. Right now, I'm just, it's a small subject of, does the town get a copy of the test results for that person's personnel file?
Two copies and one.
I'm sorry?
Two copies, are you saying that the person?
We need, we would see a copy of the test results showing whether they tested positive or negative would go in their personnel file.
So I guess the different scenarios, if they're traveling, they went out of state, they went to a place, then they need to, if they're going to come back to work within the period, then yes, they need to show a negative result because that's what they're required to do for the state and we should require that for them to come back to work. If they're, if they're not going to wait quarantine period, if they're willing to wait quarantine period, then I don't think we can require the test result.
Well, because they're not going to take, I mean, they've taken the quarantine period instead.
That's where I was going to question about this question was, because if they test positive, you don't have to go back for another test in the event that you talk to the contact three, you know, they find out that you don't have the symptoms, you don't have the extra candies for that period, then most of them find home, which still maybe will scratch them before, but not three of the symptoms, and then be allowed back to work.
And we have that already in place because what we said was in protocols or policies that were set up by the board in June, that if you test positive, you can only come back under these conditions. Either you end up with a series of negative tests or you wait out the quarantine period and you don't have the symptoms. I mean, at the end of 14 days, if you still have symptoms, do not come back. The 14, the number of days is the minimum. It's not a maximum where, okay, no matter what, you need to come back. It's, if you don't have the symptoms, you don't come back.
Can I ask what are the rules for the close contacts if we tell someone they have close contacts?
Well, that's what we're going to be talking.
That's separate.
Yeah. What I'm asking right now is for the test results, if someone tests positive, do we require a copy of the test to go in the personnel file? Because, well, you know, if they're going to take COVID leave, if they're going to take sick leave, we need documentation.
So if they take the test and they're positive, I think we need documentation. If they take the test, they test negative and they don't want to wait out the quarantine period, I think we need the document.
So if they're negative, they don't have to stay out for 14 days?
Well, again, we're going to, we're going to talk with Bob about that again.
It's cold. You know what I mean?
Right, well, I understand, we're, right now, all I'm asking is documentation. The next question that I want to have this discussion, this is why, because the situation we had previously, why I invited Steve and Keith here, was to talk about, okay, what happens if someone in your department tests positive? Or can show that you, as an employee, had, were within six feet or 15 minutes to that person? But right now, I want to limit it to documentation and we can get to the other questions.
I refuse. I don't, you know, I'm supposed to.
Well, again, we're not, it's not whether we're, we're not requiring, what I'm asking about is the testing, documentation, giving the town a copy. That's it?
Right, that's what I'm saying, I have refused. I didn't, no, I wasn't.
So if they, if they don't, if they don't want to provide, then they have to wait out the time?
Well, isn't there an interpretation period too? I mean, so somebody's exposed to somebody for 15 minutes on Monday, I mean, so they get tested Tuesday, I mean, how does that work?
Well, again, this is, I just want to separate out, I'm really sorry to say this, what documentation do we want in the person's personnel file? Gordon has said, for instance, if this person, if someone wants to come back to work having done the travel, if they want to come back to work, they have to have a negative test, they have to provide a copy. If someone tests positive, for whatever reasons it is, they need to provide a copy. Are there any, so I guess, I'm trying.
If they're going to take COVID leave, they need documentation.
Yeah, I think that's, that's pretty obvious.
If they're going to take COVID leave, they need documentation.
Well, you're going to figure out and get a documented, get a sick.
If they're going to be out for a period of time, all that would do is a doctor's note to return them back to work. Because if they, they may be out for a period of time, that's actually not good for this infectious disease. And that would keep their privacy to themselves. Except that, I know what it says. No, I wasn't, I wasn't negative for COVID, but I still need to, 14, 21 days because of all the infectious diseases that are on course.
Well, I guess the issue, there's twofold to this issue. Right now, there's the COVID CARES Act funding that you need to be able to track separately. So if it's a definite COVID issue, then I think it needs to be tracked. If it's a separate issue, I think we would handle that like we normally. But I think if anybody uses COVID time for paid leave, then we need documentation that they had the test or they had symptoms or whatever it is.
Or the documentation may be that they were, we are, from the department head or from somebody else, showing that they in fact were within six feet of someone for the 15 minutes.
Fine.
Yeah.
That's reasonable.
But that, you know, we'd have a note from Mary or Joe, their department head, that says that, that's why this person is out using COVID leave. They may not decide to get tested, okay, that's fine. Okay, so I've got that. So I think the question that came up, Susan's and everybody else, is, is, okay, if we get a positive case at work, whether it's a employee or someone who's exposed to an employee who tests positive, or where we have employees that, there are other people here at work that are coming in, they spend more than 15 minutes closer than six feet away, and that person, we get a positive report somehow, that one way or the other, the person's tested positive or the person is exposed. The next step is, we start off, the assumption is we're quarantining that person, not us, but that person needs not to come to work. That person needs to be in quarantine at home. Then there's a choice for that person. That person can either get tested or that person decides not to get tested. If the person gets tested and tests negative, is it okay to bring them back or are we saying there needs to be another test? Or are we saying there has to be a minimum number of days before they can return to work even if they test negative?
So normally, you would get the second test. And that's all the reason you have to work, have some.
And the two tests need to be at least 24 hours apart.
24 hours apart, okay? That would make false testing and also need a longer time period. And then, but if you're doing this after one test, I would say you should do 10 days after that test. Effectively, you'd be allowed to.
10 days after you're negative?
After you're negative. This is just for exposure, few existent. I know it's exposed.
Yes.
So they do one test, they do one test, and if it's negative, they have 10 days, they can do another test. There may be certain events with the second personnel that take a little bit care. So, I'm not going to blame my heart on any of that at all. Blood is essential to this. No question, you know?
They're on their way back in, Bob, and all, Kevin?
Keith?
Keith, Keith, can't talk.
So, she and the secretary, or please, the secretary, everyone would be, the secretary, we're taking that passion, that's all the time, different view. Chief has to send you close enough. CLA, call the SOB, not so much the secretary, you need to pass one of the seven things.
So what if you have, we said, so let's only try our best. So if you took two tests, one hour, you could come back after your second day. And then if you only took one test, then you're going to stay home 10 days after it's negative. What if you take no test?
No test, again. You go to one, now, why are we not giving?
So they are close.
It was just a close call, okay? And did they call 211 at the beginning of this call?
Excellent, they have to call that number.
Absolutely.
And that?
Any call, by the way, whether they're positive, negative, whatever, they call, they call me, of course, I'm going to help, you call 211. And they're going to guide you in the exact right direction because they didn't even say that. When you're far, you're, but you won't.
So you don't have to get a test and people back?
They have to let you back.
They'll?
They let you back.
And you are our first contact, they should call you, you should.
No, you can call 211.
Don't even call, don't even tell me you have such a reason.
I'll find out, oh, you, hold on, you just go words in my mouth. You said, this is the first call. I said, the first call was 211.
Okay.
I don't know if it's Friday, I will show. And then you should get contacted.
Is there a, and we need to know if, or is it just 211 in there?
Friday, is that?
Nope, I'm just saying, I'm out of order. So we do 211, that would notify you, but if there's anyone else that we need to know about.
Well, if it's, if it's not the department head, the department head should be notified by the employee.
I'm saying, we have the department.
No, I understand that. But the employee should be notified, the department head.
Correct.
Okay? Good.
So Bob?
What 211 says, it should happen. And if they say you're playing there, if they say you should go get tested, you should go get tested.
They're, you have degrees after being in the office. I have kind of degrees in health science, I actually have a regular third and a fifth, but I'm wanted after being in the office. Pretty much, I know what you're going to say, what we're going to do is, if one here from, not meeting the office, they may know a hundred percent. So a negative probably, and then it seems to be what could be considered a cluster, the entire department, you are part of the department, they're going to be questioned before the department goes on to that.
So, Amy, I'm sorry, I need to answer one more question. So if, you know, obviously, if someone's through season and so someone calls them sick and, you know, you know that symptoms, they're all very sensitive to COVID. So if somebody calls and says they have a cold, how, what do I do? Like, does it look like a single?
You always go.
What do I use, does it go on, I have to make that touch?
You don't, no, you can't make, you don't.
Ask them to.
You do that. Time again, 211, destroy any infectious disease, it doesn't matter if you go.
But Bob, the other thing is, setting aside 211 for a moment, if someone has three of the symptoms of COVID.
Then, yes.
Then even if they say, I think I've got a cold, if they've got three of the symptoms of COVID, they need to, until they get tested, assume they've got COVID. And therefore, they need to start the quarantine process. And they can, they should call 211, obviously. I strongly recommend they get tested if for no other reason for their own sake. But if they've got the sneezing, if they've got coughing, if they've got a temperature, those are three symptoms right there, boom, boom, boom. You, they can't just assume it's a cold.
But if you have long niggas, usually, maybe you just have either a spread or maybe, you know, allergies, water reactions, you have all three of those. And you have it every year in October, excuse me, every October, they have that, they use that. But now, along the side of it, every year in October, you always felt like that, and now you've got these other symptoms, you're leaning towards, yeah.
To go back to the essential functions, back in the spring, the state declared what functions were essential functions, like water department. What they also, they said was, unless the person is tested positive, they can go to work. But if they're going to work, here are the additional protocols that they've got to follow. It can't be simple as everything's normal. It's, you need to do these following things at work to be at work.
Which I was going to touch base on because, and I don't have a horse, but sometimes we talk, before COVID, we might actually be riding a water truck together because we don't run the same park. So one of those people could, you know, you could eat a boat, but they shouldn't go in the same truck. That's a way to be enough. Therefore, be really close together if they have to be, be really close together.
Right, separate the work as much as possible, separate the employees as much as possible. Take the additional precautions of mask wearing and, you know, washing your hands and everything else that much more seriously than you might otherwise. Obviously, you should be doing many of these things even if you don't have anybody who might have been exposed. But if you've got an employee who's not tested yet, therefore, we don't have a positive, but may have been exposed and they're essential, we need them at work, they can continue to be working, but they've got to follow the additional protocols. It's no different than the hospitals, for instance. They had to enact those protocols and still have employees who might have been exposed. Obviously, these people are exposed all the time at the hospital, but they kept going to work because they had not tested, they had not tested positive, but they had to follow the additional protocols as part of their work environment. So, you know, I know we had water department employees who came in during the weekend. They weren't, for instance, here at town hall. I'm not worried about water department employees going to the water department facility and contaminating the town hall. And even if they had, they'd come through here, they weren't with me, for instance, for 15, they weren't with me for 15 minutes closer than 6 feet. So again, I wasn't going to be worried about that. I mean, those are the standards that we've been using. So that unless for some reason you had water department employees interacting for 15 minutes over a 24-hour period closer than 6 feet with somebody else from another department, those members of the other departments should not have a concern. Am I off?
No, we're, absolutely, Bob. See, what about the contact? I've had some people say, ask them, oh, people came in, they tested, what, how long would that test? Well, even if they haven't had a test, we know, but what's the, it's a very workable for you to do that? I have people asking me.
Specifically about the doorbell?
They kind of.
They just, going out, doing a first house in their life. I just like, you know, the scenario of it is, then after you got the doorbell, did you go and wash your hands? Oh, that's a bit, you don't know what, so. A lot of them present that stuff on a surface, they say it would be up for 48 hours, but again, with the idea of like, that the doorbell would be, you know, contaminated, you know, that somebody had taken off their mask and decided to sneeze off of that door. Is it possible? It's possible, but the contact surfaces are not as great a problem, but we thought they were, did. It doesn't mean that we stop washing out the contact surfaces. Doesn't mean that you keep your hands away from your face. It doesn't, but it's also not, it's an airborne spray, virus, you know? That's what we're, just because that was the one that first day, just like I get to work and all of a sudden, boom, you get like four people saying, yeah, that, you know? So you ask them, what, what, you know, I mean, was there, did they touch it going on in their house or, you know? Because even if people are innocent, they have. So the point is, you know, if it wasn't handled, it may prove to be silly to handle. And look at all of your convictions, like every day. So it's, it's being cautious, but trying not to, but I would tell them, it's less likely, bring it up, or do it.
So then, on that one also, I have somebody, divorce, has one person that is kind of a seventh of all this, and I'm very curious of that person going to work. So should I be able to, and I believe to say, use a work from home? They step all, they answer at home, they do all their work, and myself, I feel comfortable with doing, okay, do well. Is that something I can do or should we do that? I mean, I couldn't assume that, but this stuff is, I'm not sure.
Well, in fact, we're going to, we're going to talk a little bit about work from home and that would, you know, there are specific instances, for instance, someone has a pre-existing condition that makes them more vulnerable, they do, the employee does, has a pre-existing condition that makes them more vulnerable to COVID. And we have doctor's notes from those employees. And so we say, fine, based on the doctor's note, you can work from home, as an example. Someone's in quarantine but not having COVID and they can work from home. Fine, great, you're not taking any leave, you're doing your work from home, great. Fine, great, you're not taking any leave, you're doing your work from home, great. And then what I did was say, okay, for other reasons approved by the board selection. I mean, in this case, for instance, has, you know, if this person's been working at the highway department all this time, for the last several months, and the, what happened this weekend causes that person to say, I want to work from home, nothing's changed.
No, it was the week before, I had a special home plan.
Okay, well, then, what I think you need to do is talk to the board selection about that, and we get something in writing from the family's doctor, saying that my son, my daughter, my husband, my wife, someone living at home, has a pre-existing condition that requires, that makes them more vulnerable. And the work circumstances that I, you know, the circumstances, the environment that I worked in, make me a vector for COVID, that I would easily, that COVID would be easily existing in my workplace, and I could easily bring it home, and I don't want to do that. I don't want to worry about the other member of my household. Have that doctor certify that, get it into the board selection, so the board does approve that work from home. So we have it documented that the person has gotten the okay to work from home, because the default right now is we're not allowing to work from home. I mean.
No, myself, I would agree with that, because we didn't have any legal out there for how long.
Right.
All of a sudden, somebody gets sick, now it's around again, where, you know, some people have finished school, and some people haven't finished school. Myself, I would feel comfortable with that person working, and then if somebody else had that.
But get the documentation from their family physician. Because we don't, we, we don't know the intimate details of that, of that family member's medical situation. So, I'm sorry.
No, do it, want to.
Yeah.
The doctors, the intermediary here, are getting, reach something to base your decision on. I, I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, the first time is, shut everything down.
So we have break, breaking, the governor's newest orders. Restaurant table service was stopped at 9:30 PM. Gyms and liquor stores were closed at the same time. The limit on indoor gatherings is reduced to 10 people.
Okay, bye!
Under a slated new targeted.
Effective immediately?
Doesn't say effective immediately, I'm, this is just the, it's not the, it's not the official press release, this is Boston Globe writing up. And it's saying that the Department of Public Health is instituting a new stay-at-home advisory that urges the public to be at home between 10 PM and 5 AM.
Which most people are anyway, I don't.
Not everybody.
I said most, I said most people.
There'll be some people, uh, coming up.
Supermarkets, pharmacies, gas stations, retail stores will be allowed to stay open after 9:30 PM. Just the.
In the mail-in stores.
Oh yeah, let's not forget about that. So, to keep people at home, you gotta keep them happy.
Yeah.
So, indoor limited to 10 people.
Indoor.
Indoor gatherings are reduced to 10 people, reduced from 25 currently. Out, outside, is reduced down to, from 50 to 25. And he called up 1,000 National Guard for the election for tomorrow.
If the, if the, well, are you asking this person to stay home?
Yes.
Then yes. Get the doctor's note.
Yeah, we see, I didn't have it, but we have to have another one.
But you have one?
The first time, yes, I put it in the first one.
Okay, then, I, it's up to the board, but I would say if we have a doctor's note certifying that a family member has a pre-existing condition that makes them more vulnerable to COVID, and we do have a legitimate concern that the employee will bring COVID back, you know, is a high, high probability than normal that that person will bring COVID back to the family? And if that person can in fact.
Final thing, just to do this until the last, until the 10 days.
Yes. Well. I mean, I guess you could.
Up to that now, but still.
Well, I don't have any good, I don't have any good advice at that, that point.
This gets weird.
Because if we're only, if we're, if in this particular instance, we're limiting to a situation that may or may not have created a threat in the first place.
Right.
Because it's not, it's, it's, it's not that someone at your workplace had COVID, it's that one or more people there at your workplace might have been exposed to COVID. You have no confirmed cases.
I mean, it's like I said, it's the thought of me saying, yeah, you have to come in, and then something happens.
Right.
That's on my conscience.
Well, we've been.
All of them, the town's directors. The decisions I have made are all based off of either laws, or policies, procedures, and practices. We run like art at all times, and either don't think I'm, made it, or I have to take it down.
I mean, let me put it this way, Steve, is a person who, the employee, are they quarantining in essence? Are they never leaving the house? Are they never interacting with anybody else outside of their?
Yes, I'm sure they go over, but not, nobody else does.
Well, then, you know, that's a poor case of judgment, that. If that person is so concerned about the situation, that you're saying, well, I can't work, at work, but I can go to stop and shop.
More likely to be exposed to stop and shop, the number, just the numbers part of it.
You're worried about surfaces?
Yeah, the number of surfaces, yeah, the doorbell, doorbell. If that person was positive, had a phone in front of them, and then you went out, you used to say, oh, there is probably more likely that the phone would have been that handled, yeah. So I don't know, I think, well, I don't want to be taken at fault by that sort of situation.
Some parts, I'm sure I'm a little bit. I'm a, I have, there's, there's a lot of false, I mean, same people. I'm the head of the department, I get asked a question, so, I ask my question to, well, but I agree with the people, how they're saying, and so, I don't want to be that one that says, yeah, you have to be here. And something happened. And I understand, that's why I'm true, that's why you was talking to, because I'm a better authority, I thought you might have done exactly what you said.
Exactly, but you, you.
It's still not, yeah.
But, but it still has, it should also come from you, if you are here at the time, then you should be listening.
Great, and that's what I'm saying, I feel as though, I am right to say this person can stay home from work. I know.
And they can stay home from work, it's a matter of, of what, what they want to do as far as receiving payments, or staying at home from work. They don't be able to use company power at home from work.
And if they're a little bit, they do their work, and they still come in after they're gone, and I clean everything up, I wipe everything down before we, when she comes in, she does her work. Will she go out yet?
Steve, just so you know, eliminate the personal pronouns.
So, so where, where there's personnel that fall under working times and guidelines according to a contract, or whatever, I guess has been past practice, can you, as a department head, change their hours? I think so.
I did that, I maybe, I don't know, what if I could change the hours?
Well, well, that, I mean, basically, that's what you're saying. You're saying that you're changing hours for an employee because of this. You're making an accommodation.
They're running out of the house, they have the computer house, they use the phone, they do everything just like they're sitting in the office. There's certain things that they cannot do out of the, out of the house, so they come into work, after they're gone, I wipe everything down in the office, and they come in, do what they have to do, and that's.
So that's happening.
I know the baby's part of this. The baby's, you work from work, I wasn't waiting to pay you up.
That, well, don't have that happen, please.
So, do you have the ability to pull without the files they need? And then, so anything that they would go from work, because this would be a labor issue, and I'm not a labor expert, but. So if they were able to do 9:00, 2:00, 7:00, and go off to the mall, and they just needed to pass, you know, 5:00, 6:00, 7:00. Somebody couldn't get 5:00, 6:00, 7:00, walk it off to their house, and go back to, still have to work them hours.
Back and after, instead of, I love that phrase.
Perhaps.
I just want to use it till after everything's clear, I'm not, just go on with, fellow personnel.
I think a lot of the, the stuff that's going on is everybody's handling things differently. So I think all of them on the same page, I think that people's comfort level would be a lot stronger.
I think what's happening, though, is we're getting unique situations all the way around, and it's a little harder to kind of put around in the same box.
It's almost different situation, very different, that's the thing.
One of the things I was gonna ask you is, are you looking to have this situation continue over the course of the pandemic? Or just until whoever might have been exposed to whoever?
If it was exposed, it may be us that's sick or.
And we're about to close in on that, is that what I kind of understood?
Please, just for a moment, man.
And the employee will be okay with this?
So, I haven't asked that person yet, but that is my plan.
So, I mean, I'm thinking, we, maybe discussing something we don't need to discuss for this particular instance. But in general, we need to have some policies, but again, everything is so unique to everybody, dude.
Right, we are gonna change several things, we can do it there again, because we started opening it up a little bit more than we had it for. So now the lock, the door was a little bit coming from the outside, from the work area, so.
Yeah, you've got the vest of people there that you can kind of isolate people.
Right, yes, you can do that, then, at this point, you can serve people not more, who was exposed, the weather's cold. I just feel better for that person not being out.
Yeah, I mean, you literally can keep everyone except yourself out of the office, and.
Right.
And your situation's actually more manageable than a lot of places. I, I guess I've now lost track of what we're trying to determine.
Well, Steve, let's assume for the heck of it that at some point this week, this period X, is this person coming back to work?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'd leave it alone.
Yeah, that's where I was kind of going with all this, I think we leave it alone from now and see how this evolves.
Well, so, but it doesn't give guidance to.
No, no, we're just starting to shoot separately.
If, this situation could very, very probably come from you. So you're saying basically is if a person has somebody at home that's susceptible, then they should get a note from their doctor, and once that notice is submitted to you, and you'll make your decision based on that.
Yeah, and we.
And when the note was already submitted, then I guess you would have to submit it if another incident took place.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that way, we've got something to go by and hold everybody to the same criteria.
Right, same.
The bottom line is, that the department head is responsible for everything that goes on in the department. They have to deliver a service, if you do, can still deliver a service, if you spoke to, well, if parents called you, you lapped, then I think it's up to the department head to make the decision.
I know, but I just think, basically, why is this not kind of be on the same?
Yeah, no, no, you're right, we should be, yeah.
Yeah, I think if you have the documentation, since there's an issue, as long as that's the minimum requirement for the department head to make a special circumstance for that employee, that sounds fine. But if they don't have that documentation, you need that before you can do it.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of common sense.
Okay.
That's the one problem with common sense, and this is very common. It's a rare quality.
So, I think, um, there were a couple of the COVID issues that had come up recently. One was on paying for rapid COVID testing. We have an employee who wanted, who would have gotten their normal COVID test, and the insurance companies are paying for those. The insurance company was not going to pay for a rapid COVID test. The town was not requiring a rapid COVID test. The employee wanted to get the rapid COVID test, which costs more. The question is now is whether or not the town will pay for the additional cost of the rapid COVID test.
Will care cover it?
Pardon?
Care won't cover it.
Well, that's a good question, because I talked, was talking to Linda Cole and to Sandy Nolan Val, and just spitballing, and saying, well, wait a minute. Given the attitude from Plymouth, they're gonna say, was the rapid COVID test necessary? Was it required? And the answer's gonna be no.
So how, how about if, because it's gonna be a day apart, right? And if it's an essential employee in the department needs the employee, then I would think that we would pay for the rapid test, because you need the results back as soon as possible. If they're not an essential employee, then I would say no.
I want to see you start to decide who was essential, who wasn't important.
So when I open that.
What, what?
Well, I'll just show you one of the settings.
Kind of where I'm going with that is everybody's working at minimum level for employees, so that gets kind of true. For instance, if you had a driver or two drivers, I mean, you know.
It is essential.
Well, you wouldn't want to fit them in that bus. I mean, we go, we go back to the additional protocols.
Yep. Well, what I'm, you know.
No, I understand.
Rapid test, get it back sooner rather than later, I was kidding you. Although I don't, I'm still haven't got my head wrapped around how the rapid test works in the 24 hours, if you've had time to, anything to check there to live.
Well, that's why we get two.
No, no, I, I understand.
But I think it's not like if the town required you to do it, if you wanted the rapid, it's saying maybe you had no more sick time, or you used all your COVID time, you know what I mean, that would be different if the town was on it.
But, I, I think if you're not an essential, essential employee, but the department had it once and back, if you had one negative, and the rapid test will allow you to come back, then I think it makes sense to do the rapid, the second test.
No, I don't have an issue with that.
Well, if we're gonna be, let me play it this way, I'm fine with paying for it, just we, as we've talked about other things, there are gonna be times when we're gonna take on this expense with the assumption that Plymouth is not going to pay for it. But it is worth it to us to, in fact.
To, to get.
Expend the money. Because we're gonna run into the same thing, and with the fire department, they're gonna start doing a testing program sometime in the near future. And, you know, I said to Jason, after December 30th, Plymouth, unless the federal laws change, and who knows whatever else happens. But our assumption is, after December 30th, any expenses of that program are gonna be eaten by the town. We're not gonna have any money from Plymouth Cares. But it's gonna be worth doing, because we're not, this isn't gonna disappear at all. And we want to give, you know, we, you know, I worked with Jason about tiers of testing, in a sense of, you know, do a slow opening with employees, for instance, so that we make sure that our employees don't have to wait 24, 48 hours, not to get a result, but just to get tested.
Just to get tested, too.
Um, and it's gonna be worth doing that and spending the money.
Approximately, how much money do we have left in free cash from the previous year?
I mean.
That we didn't spend at time meeting?
Yeah.
It was tens of thousands of dollars, I think.
More than enough money to conduct testing for this.
Okay, so, I got, I think I've got an answer there, just, and then go back to, um, the COVID and laptops. Just a reminder to the departments, the laptops the town has purchased due to the pandemic, and for which it will request reimbursement from Plymouth County Cares, can only be used for work-from-home situations due to COVID. You can't use it for your own personal use, for instance. They can't be used if you're working from home for some other reason other than COVID. Snow days don't count. I got, you know, a sick kid with the flu at home, and I gotta take care of the sick kid at home. No, that's, unfortunately, the way it's set up is we have to document that if you bring the work, the laptop home, it has to be relayed because we sent you home because of COVID. You're working from home because of COVID, not because a family member's sick or something like that.
And absolutely no shopping on Amazon.
Right. Um, or even watching YouTube or anything else, for that matter. Um, so, and work from home only occurs when the employee has a note from the employee's physician stating the employee has a pre-existent, pre-existing condition that makes it advisable that the employee not work in the employee's normal workspace, or the employee is in quarantine at home due to COVID, but is not showing signs or symptoms of COVID, and is not taking COVID leave or any other type of leave, or for some other reason approved by the board selection. And that can come back, and I left that general specifically, because, you know, as you all are talking about. are talking about, we don't know all the circumstances that might come up. So maybe this is a way to provide the boards with some flexibility. I'm sorry to take so much time on these things, but given what had happened during the last couple of weeks, we needed to clarify and have that general discussion.
So this is what it does. Grab our laptop and come to the center. So, friends, leaders, uh, new employees, if you're using the laptop for COVID related issues.
Just don't go to the other parts of the Department of Public Health website, only the COVID parts. So I have nothing on the law cases, recycling abatements. Pam, do we have anything for fiscal 2021?
I'm just, I'm just simple.
Okay, so...
Can you have something?
Yeah. Well, one thing, Scott, back to COVID for a moment. Scott had asked about necessarily bogging the buildings more often. And I said, you know, and we've had this conversation, the surfaces weren't, aren't really the major problem. I mean, it's, I think both practically and psychologically, it makes sense to do it once a week. But the real challenge we're going to have, and we're going to continue to have, is the personal interactions, not the surface problem. So, and I think logistically, I think it makes it more difficult. We have a number of maintenance issues to deal with besides bogging the buildings and this limited number of people that Scott has materials. So I didn't, I said, I emphasized to him, you know, if bothering the rest of you feel differently, that might be a priority. That, you know, we put a message in with paychecks last week to reemphasize, you know, the personal interactions need to, you know, as much as people have COVID fatigue, that that's where our problem lies, that if we have a potential case of COVID here in the municipal buildings. The reason so many people had to stay home before they were tested was that people were having, meeting each other for more than 15 minutes closer than six feet away. And you, I know people want to be social, but it's, that increases the number of people that potentially exposed and then have to stay home. For the 2021 abatements, we had several people write to the board, basically, in essence, appealing their abatement. The board declined to bake the bills. I'm setting, I'm waiting for one person to commit, to commit to a time and date. We had, I believe, Pam, did you give them copies?
I did. I gave them the copies.
And so I didn't know if the board wanted to meet with these people. I didn't know if the board wanted to take some sort of other action.
The entire recycling program has taken on such, such a complicated role here. We have to set parameters. And I understand that under certain circumstances, we're going to hold off for a minute.
So did anything else come through, Gordon? Any other directives?
Directives for...
From the governor?
Just limited, it's starting Friday, it's limited 10. And he's recommending only your individual household is exempt.
Well, that's a small turkey.
I hope they made, I hope they grew small turkeys instead of large ones.
Exactly. No, they did actually have a whole lot of turkeys. Small turkeys.
You can't find a small one. All right, Troy's back. Yeah, so as I was starting to say, you know, we had to set some parameters here. And I understand that under certain circumstances, you know, people feel that they're too restrictive. We have two in front of us now. I assume everybody's looked at these. Where dates have become an issue in one instance, the suggestion was that the building was allowed until, uh, very, until October. I, I didn't know, I mean, it's possible that it was a postal issue. But at the same time, it's not that I don't believe people, but we can't be sending these all out certified mail. We might as well shut the phone ring down if we're going to send out that many things It was everybody's pleasure. Would you like to discuss this in person? I, I don't feel they deserve a look you in the face kind of thing.
Right. I went back and looked at, so the original motion that I made was to give a 60-day window to the abatement process. That didn't pass. I think that would be dealt with. These two issues anyways, and the handful of others that we rejected, I did go back and read a lot of selectmen meeting minutes. And there were a lot of times where a lot of people came before the board of selectmen previously with outstanding health issues for reasons that they didn't get the bills in time, and the board of selectmen didn't grant those. So, and the policy from the board has been to deny everyone that's late. And that's the policy, whether I agree with the policy or not, that's been the policy. So I, I mean, I, I would be in favor of extending the deadline to everybody that got in within 16 days this year because of COVID. But that was my original motion that didn't pass, so...
Well, you know, you can take that one for everything else. I can extend the real estate bills for 16 days.
Well, legally, I don't think we can.
We did extend all the bills back early this year.
Spring.
And we did get a reduction to, you know, the liquor license request. I mean, we have made exceptions this year that we haven't made in other years.
So are you suggesting we go back and revisit all the details?
I, I am, but I don't think that's going to pass, but that's my suggestion.
Well, I think, and I think the other challenge will be for the people who did pay this month, they were late, but they paid this month. Are you going to, I'm not saying it's a good thing or bad, but are you going to open the window for them too to say, I'm making this up? You know, anybody who paid, that didn't want to pay.
No, I think my, so I guess I could make a motion, I would make a motion that we extend the abatement deadline for everyone that submitted all paperwork before October 30th. So everyone that we got the paperwork in for with, with everything, but it was postmarked date, or was entered late, and we denied, I would ask that we reconsider those payments.
He's walking back and reexamining all the things. We said a policy or we don't. My philosophy has always been fair, current, persistent, without keeping the habit denied in the past years.
Exactly.
In the same, in the same policy. I realize that we can't please everybody, but I think we gave that in no respect to pay good or good. I mean, just for the car payment and the house payment and stuff, and you're late, you penalize for it.
I totally agree with you, except for these people aren't receiving a service. They're not receiving anything. We're just sending them a bill and telling them that it's a bill and they've got to pay it, even though they're not receiving anything for it. I mean, it goes back to the whole recycling program issue that they're not receiving anything for it. We're acting like it's a tax, but it's actually a bill that we're sending them for a service we're not providing.
And I think that, no.
It's available. There is a distinction.
But, but it's...
And if you want to put down a recycling center or something, it's available. I'm not suggesting we're doing it every week, that they do have a Friday call. It isn't like they can't ever possibly, you know, take advantage of some of the recycling program.
This, this issue has come up so many times, and I think people would be well aware of the fact of what's going on with your abatement and when they should put the paperwork in. If I had a Friday call, I would have lined it up for you. I wouldn't wait until I got to see something else.
I, I think it goes, for me, it goes back to what Troy was mentioning earlier. I mean, this has been an ongoing policy for years. I mean, to, to suddenly change it now, does that open up for the past years too? I mean, that, the whole thing's a nightmare anyway. We've been trying to get together with the recycling committee, but because of COVID, there's been illnesses and we haven't been able to do it. We need a whole new strategy with recycling. But for the time being, this is what we've got. I'm not suggesting it's the best thing right now, but it's what we have in place, it's what we've had in place. I think if you would change it now, how many years do you have to go back and look at this?
My motion was just for this year.
I, I understand, but then how's that for it?
I didn't get a second.
I'm not hearing a second, so...
Do you want to meet with any of these people? Well, I'll tell you, the person who specifically said I want a meeting, I've given her dates and times, eventually it's something different.
As far as the other person though, I would suggest that we give them the option to come in if they want it to. I mean, I don't see it changing, but if they'd like to at least present their case and, you know, it's easy to make a denial when you're not facing somebody.
Should, should we, with the limit going to 10 people on Friday, should we move our meetings to all remote now?
Well, at least Thursdays we can...
Thursday we can squeeze in.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, this is unusual for Thursday.
But, well, no, I mean, it's going to be difficult because you've got six people at the right start. Add Bob and the two chiefs, you've got nine. So it's going to be challenging to have any of our meetings.
Oh, okay.
At least the Monday, Thursday meetings are going to be challenging because two more people were over the limit. Once we get the six, you know, the three of you, the three department heads, Pam, myself and Area 58, you're at nine. Well, you can talk about that Thursday. I don't have to post until Monday. I mean, post Thursday, I don't have to post Mondays until Thursday, so... And it'll work out, you know, but we can invite them in, whatever it's going to be, physical or electronic and go from there.
Well, yeah, at least Tuesday nights we're not going to have to go to...
We'll see. Route 58 speed limit signage, just that the chiefs had said, yes, you know, we had the resin come in, not come in, but had sent letters to the board about additional speed limit signage, which they're in favor of, and said, let Steve make the schedule up. I don't know if you have a schedule in mind, Steve?
I have a schedule.
Okay. Aldana wrote parcel transfers that, I don't know what, why this was done, but the bill did move out of the third reading, but then got renumbered. So something's happening up there at least, so it's moving along. Post Tavern Roof Project, we're still planning for mid-November. I may be trying to set up some regular meetings for that project with all the interested parties. On Podsa Pon, we, not that there's anything for the board to do if someone wants to look at it, but they've been rescheduling the field study work by CDM, which is the engineer for Brockton, about the flow, so that, you know, they close the dams or they open the sluice, the sluice gate, or close the culvert or open the culvert, seeing what the flows will look like. There's just an update for that. Regional Old Colony had sent sort of a very general letter saying that, they noted that the agreement with Duxbury Halifax is expiring in June 21. They're, the, without the district, but the regional center is working with the legislature to establish an enterprise fund that can be used to manage regional dispatch operations to make the finances more transparent and equitable. The end goal is to establish the enterprise, type light assessments, execute UH municipal agreements, so that everybody's on the same term cycle. So we're just in tune with them. Fraudulent unemployment claims and data breaches, Gordon had asked for that to be on the agenda. Obviously, we're getting any number of unemployment claims for municipal employees, right and left. It's not a particular department, it's all departments, it's not just our town, it's everybody, it's not just towns, it's everybody private too. Basically, there were so many large data breaches, not to do with the town of Halifax, not to do with our payroll company, but national, international. There's so much personal information out there that the bad hats decided to take advantage of that during the last few months and for whatever reason have intensified their fraudulent claim applications during the last month or so, so that we're seeing a lot more of it here. Gordon, for instance, Barbara Gator got hit, we've had people hit at the school, police department, you name it, so... I believe that Linda works with people to notify them to say, hey, you should check your personal information, you should know that we have a fraudulent claim. We are working with our consultant to make sure that you're not dinged or your record's not dinged or anything else, but that we're defending against the fraudulent claims. So that's where we are. I don't know if there's anything else, Gordon.
Just, you know, the, the process was you had to go down to the police station, file a police report, get a copy of the report, and now going to send it to the credit agencies.
Yeah, that's the preferred response from the federal agencies. Some departments were just, and we were doing it at the beginning, because there were so many calls, we're just using it as a, having dispatched, put it in the call notes. And then I received an email from the state, they said, because of the, the extra steps that these bad guys took, it's almost categorized into identity, that type of, type of offense. And they gave one of the, the reporting of it. So it's basically for reporting persons only. And I know the feds are keeping a sort of database, whether they are going to find these guys, you know, at Dallas. But if that, I don't mean, I mean, some of the other departments, you, you know, just notes on, on the call, consider the report, it's better, you know, for tracking persons at the end of the year.
Yeah, strange that it comes up the week before the election.
Pam, you asked for recycling abatements for previous years to be on the agenda? Okay, we'll, we'll save it to Thursday. Dangerous interception list, we've got, OCPC's working on conducting road safety audits at 15 locations in total. They had a list of ones in Halifax, I mean, mailed it to the safety committee, y'all ended up adding Pine Street and Clay Street to it, so OCPC's aware of that. The board wants to look at the list that's here. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary side, but, you know, when we're talking about Halifax, a dangerous location, I mean, just a couple of accidents over the course of years because we don't have a lot of absence except for a couple of places.
I think on some of the, some of the lists, normally we already did some work on it. See that, the stop signs, streetway stop signs there that, so I think we've done some work every time to minimize it.
Fieldstone Farms, I just wanted to note to the board that the new consent agreement that the board signed back December of 19, January of 20, as far as I know, had not been approved by the court. And that increase that the board approved, or the number of show dates for '21 and '22, is connected to that consent agreement. So I did notify Scott that I hadn't seen any paperwork from the court. He said he was going to check with his attorney. I'll just continue to put that in the reminders, right? Because technically, the board's decision is dependent on the consent agreement being approved by the court. Then the board earlier this afternoon went out to 415 Plymouth Street for a site visit to look at a plow of material to determine whether or not permitting was needed or whether the board could just say, in essence, no, you can remove this stuff without a permit needed. And I don't know what the results of that site visit were.
Yes, as you mentioned, we, we did meet on the property and took a half mile or so walk in the cold, windy conditions. I let everybody speak for themselves, but it appeared to me that it was what it was suggested it was, which was essentially a mulch pile of debris, just decomposing. I'm not sure, it looks like most of it was brought to the property. It looks like it's been turned insufficiently, and I mean, it looks like it's decomposing as you might expect. I, I don't have a problem with it, I don't know how everybody else feels.
The only question I had is that African compost site that needs to be... The only question I had is that an active compost site that, that needs to be bowled with DEP or somebody else?
Well, that's a question that we need to do...
Well, and I, in fact, had notified the parties that you, they had that situation, that, you know, both in terms of zoning with Rob, and then also permitting with DEP. If they're running a compost site, they've got to meet those permitting requirements. But in terms of the earth removal, if it's, you know, if it's compost and they want to remove the compost, you know, in terms of permitting with the board of selectmen, that's the board's jurisdiction, but if the board says that there's no, um, it, you know, it's not, it doesn't qualify as earth or soil or gravel or something like that, which falls under the bylaw, then...
Didn't appear to be so for me, but again, we'll let everybody speak for themselves.
I don't see any issues with it. It seemed like most of the compost, the recent compost, there hasn't been it for a while. It seemed beautiful.
I, I think it's compost too, I just think the issue is the ability to drop off material there, and then compost, and then the process of it. I mean, I would think it's going to be brought to a different site to be screened and have the materials brought out. I mean, they didn't talk about screening it on site or anything, but, I mean, if it's going to be screened on site, then I would think that it's being processed, so that it might fall under the bylaw the way I read it, but it is compost, it's just whether or not it's going to be processed or, or, you know, fall through the deep, you got to ask.
Well, certainly, I mean, as, as far as the earth removal goes, I, I don't think it's earth per se, uh, so I don't know that the board has jurisdiction over that, other than to say, no, it's not an earth removal permit that they're going to be needing. As far as any conservation, uh, DEP involvement, then, you know, I think it's legitimately okay to refer to Conservation Commission to see if they need...
Or if it's not KICOM, then the appropriate State Department.
Everybody good with that, or? I'll, I'll, I'll put it before the motion, that's second, I wasn't there.
All right. Thanks. That's all I got. The negotiations, I don't have anything to bring back at this point, so...
All right, so what do we have for meetings this week? Just Thursday?
You just have Thursday, yeah. Tomorrow is a off Tuesday, so our next meeting would be Thursday at 1:30.
All right, so...
Motion to adjourn?
I want to change a motion to adjourn, did I just hear wrong?
I'm making one for everybody to go out and vote.
All those in favor of adjourn?
Hi.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.